I'd like to make a motion that we accept Kathy Hoover, who will be participating online because of a personal emergency.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Motion carries.
And then I'd like to, James Ronge from Round Hill Baptist Church to come and bring invocation.
Good evening. My name is James Ronge. I'm the Youth Director at Round Hill Baptist Church here in King George County. It's an honor and a privilege to offer this invocation. I just want to start with a quick word. Proverbs 22:6 tells us to train up a child in the way he should go. Even when he is old, he will not depart from it. The education of children is important enough that God includes it in His Word. And as this verse tells us, the education of these children, the education they are receiving is part of the critical path that will carry them through to adulthood. So I just want to say thank you to each of the board members, everyone here in attendance for taking your time. You guys are making this a priority, and that's an amazing thing. As I tell my students, half of being successful is just showing up, and you guys have done that. So thank you. Let's open in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for everyone that you've brought here tonight, Lord. We thank you for everything on the ballot to be discussed. We thank you for just the minds and the imaginations and the energy that you've brought to this place, Lord. Just be with these proceedings. We ask for a hedge of protection that you would continue to guard and guide each of us as we make decisions that will favor the education of the students here in King George County, Lord. All these things we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much for including me.
Yes, Mrs. Hoover is out on medical issue, and we miss her tonight. But she is online, and she's going to be able to participate that way. So, public employee comment. All right. Public comment is an opportunity for community members to share matters they believe deserve the board's attention. It is time for a one-way communication to the board, not a forum or a dialogue or a debate. All speakers are treated equally, and comments should be courteous, respectful, and related to the school division services or policies. Audience members are expected to maintain proper decorum. Speakers will be recognized by the chair and asked to state their name, their connection to the school division, and their district. Each speaker has up to three minutes to comment. Our first speaker this evening is Pastor Sherman Davis.
Thank you, board. I appreciate that. My name is Sherman Davis, and I live in the Dogland District and vote there diligently. James, Chapter 2, scripture says, "Thou believe us that there is one God; thou doest well; the devils or demons also believe and tremble." Before I was a believer, before I was saved by the grace of God, I had what the Bible calls demonic faith or dead faith. And I did, but I didn't have saving faith. As I think back on 54 years ago when I received Christ, and I, when I didn't have a saving faith, now I knew that Jesus loved me. I knew that He died on the cross for me. And I knew that I believed that He paid for my sin. I read about all of His good works He did in life. I knew that He had paid the price for my sins, and I knew that He had died for all mankind. I knew all of that. I knew He had defeated death when He walked out of the tomb. But I knew that He loved me. But the problem was, I didn't love Him. And the reason I didn't love Him is because I didn't know Him. Because once you know Him, you will love Him. And He says, "If you love Me, you will keep My commandments." And so I didn't know Him. I didn't love Him, so I didn't know Him. And I believed all the things that I'd read about the Lord Jesus Christ. I believed what the Bible said. I believed in a real literal burning hell. I believed in fire and all the stuff that old-time preachers preached. I believed all of that. And so, but the reason I did not know Him is because I didn't love Him, because I did not know Him. I think today that our churches are probably filled with people who may have just demon, dead faith, who know all the facts and all the, everything about what the Bible says, and know that He loves them, but they don't love Him. And so, one day, standing in the back of the church, I heard a message that Jesus says, and I've told you before. And I realized that, and as I bowed my head that day, something happened in here that changed me forever. And when I meet folks who know the Lord, I meet folks who have been changed. And they can explain it, but down in their souls, their hearts of hearts, the person of the Holy Spirit of God lives there. And something just changes, and they go from just demon faith to dead faith. Dead faith don't accomplish anything, to knowing the Lord Jesus Christ. And they all said, amen. Perfect.
Thank you, Pastor Davis. Yes, thank you. That's my baby right there. Okay, and then we have Jamie Sims. Nice to meet you, by the way.
My name's Jamie Sims. I'm here in regards to my son's bus stop change from the Shiloh District. Just wanted to voice my concern that the bus stop has changed to a half a mile distance from where it currently was for probably 11 years or longer. There's no sidewalk on the main road for the children to walk on, not just mine, but other children that live back behind us as well. Weather conditions, it'll be dark in a couple of weeks, most likely with fall coming. And I just, you know, personal property, if the children are walking on someone's road to get off the road in case of a vehicle. And then at the new bus stop, having vehicles blocking other homes that are there, that could possibly become an issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I did send, I forwarded your email to Dr. Boyd, and we did get a response from Transportation, but I'll let him address that. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Pastor Davis. I know he stepped out, but it's always nice to see him here this evening. And Ms. Sims, thank you so much. You did a wonderful job. Thank you for coming out. Certainly, I hope there's more like you to come and express their concerns. It certainly helps us. Ms. Davis did send me the concern. I also forwarded it to our Transportation Department. I think what I'd like to do, when you have an opportunity to sit down with you, if we could, I know this is specific to...
State road.
State road, and you particularly. So, not to burden the public meeting tonight, but if you have an opportunity before you leave, maybe, or I can reach out to you, and we'll see if we can set up a meeting so I can fill you in on some of the details. Does that sound good? Yep, okay.
Thank you, yes. Okay. Anything else, Dr. Boyd?
No, nothing else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Any changes to the agenda? No? All right. Presentations. We have a cell phone policy implementation. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, so this evening, we do, at the request of the board, have our principals here this evening to go over some of the implementation strategies or plans that they have in implementing the cell phone policy that we've all worked tirelessly to create. We talked a little bit at our last meeting about how that would look, and we wanted to hear from our principals on what some of the implementation strategies are. We do have Dr. Burns here this evening to cover the high school first, and then I think we'll work down with our other principals. So, Dr. Burns, it's all yours.
My first presentation before the school board. I'm so delighted to be here. I will tell you, I have a strong belief that principals have a lot of responsibilities. One of the most important responsibilities principals have is to protect instructional time. Protect instructional time. And I will tell you that the single greatest threat to instructional time, for all of those listening and everybody here, is cell phones. Cell phones create a lot of disruption to instructional time, and they have nothing to do with teaching and learning. So I'm here to share with everyone that we are going to strictly enforce the governor's expectations and the expectations of this school board, that we are not going to allow cell phones from the moment that students enter the building to the moment that students leave the building. It's very important that we are consistent in that enforcement and that we communicate to all our stakeholders that that is exactly what we are going to be doing, because we're all about protecting instructional time. So you've got to disconnect to reconnect. Put the phones away in order to connect with the curriculum that's being taught. So as you can see here, I've shared with you a few talking points with respect to the cell phones. You can keep them at home. You can keep them in your car. You can keep them in a locker. You keep them in your bookbag. They are to be out of sight, out of mind, period, from the moment you enter to the moment that you depart. We're going to have our students, you know, we want to make sure our students understand this expectation. We're going to give them two days. We're going to give them two days' warnings to get everyone straight, because we understand that students need time. They need time to understand what's expected. And so we're not looking to come out too terribly strong, but we are going to come out strong with respect to enforcing the expectation with cell phones. There are some special exceptions, of course. There are exceptions in cases where there might be an emergency or there might be a situation where principals need to get in contact with parents, and we may request the child to use their cellphone to get in contact with their parent. There may be exceptions where school counselors need to, you know, get in contact with a particular child's parent in terms of, you know, they're, you know, remembering your social security number so that you can complete a FAFSA form or an application to college. So certainly, there will be exceptions. But those exceptions will not occur in the classroom. They will not occur in the classroom. Another exception, or an important thing to share with you, is this. In order to change the behavior of the students, you have to change the behavior of the adults. So we're going to expect that all the adults in the building enforce this expectation to include modeling what we expect. We do not expect our staff to be using their cell phones during class time, because we have to model what we expect from our students. So that's in a nutshell. And if we're all consistent across the board, it will not be a problem. It will not be an issue. We are certainly not in the business of kicking kids out of school for cell phones use. In fact, you can't do that. But we are in the business of making sure that we protect instructional time and focus on teaching and learning. Bam. There you go. Any questions?
Any questions? Kathy?
Yes, I have a question. Dr. Burns, I'm sure you're aware that students wear headphones and ear pods, and I'm assuming that they will be addressed as well. I have not seen anything in writing, but that doesn't mean it's not there. I just, they definitely wear them frequently. So how, will they be addressed in the same manner?
Absolutely, yes. We will address those in the same manner as well. Smart watches will probably be the biggest challenge, because they may not be, you know, smart watches don't typically create a distraction or disruption. So we, you know, we'll certainly be mindful of that. But yes, earbuds in the ear, that is certainly obvious. And you never want students having earbuds in the classroom or in the hallway, especially if you have an emergency situation and they're unable to hear what that emergency situation is because they have earbuds in their ear. We don't want that.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Mrs. Cleveland?
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate it. And I think that this plan is awesome, and I appreciate you.
Well, actions speak louder than words.
Dr. Burns, only one question I'm sure is probably implied, but it says, "Keep cell phones in bookbag turned off." It's implied, I assume, there?
Yes, absolutely. Certainly, there will be cases where, you know, we don't want teachers chasing cell phones. We know that kids are going to carry their cell phones on their person. We are coming out of the gate saying, "That's a no-no." But we're not going to put teachers in a situation where they're doing searches of students. It will become an issue if that cellphone comes out, and we will remind students that they are to be off and in your bookbag. Plain and simple.
Mr. Bush?
I assume you sent, the parents, I assume, are aware of this. I know I've seen some information about it. So are you sending something, you know, has already gone out? So all the parents are talking to their kids, getting ready for the first day of school?
Well, I think there's been some communication from...
Yeah, I've seen.
The Director of Communication. But ordinarily, in a perfect scenario, I would have had, sent a letter out two weeks ago. But I do have a letter that is going out tomorrow that is going to speak to this issue along with other things that we're implementing with respect to E-Hall Pass and our weapons detection system and some other expectations that we'll have. And we'll, you know, we'll have some good stuff to share in that letter, too.
All right, that's good. I mean, there's a whole lot, but, you know, obviously, I really appreciate you. I know you've got a big job ahead of you, you know. Cell phones, coming in as a new administrator. I know I've been there. And you have our support on the board. And we appreciate the way that you started your whole process of being the new high school administrator, so thank you.
Well, since I have an audience, I will say this. For those of you who are listening, and those of you who are here, review the dress code, too. Review the dress code, too.
Good point.
I have a question, Dr. Burns. It sounds like we're on the same page as far as not really wanting the teachers to have to deal a whole lot with the cell phones. So what is that going to look like if a teacher does have a kid that's messing with their phone in class?
Well, you know, obviously, there's going to be a tiered level of consequences. Certainly, a teacher's going to give a warning, and if the student doesn't comply with that warning, that's a whole different scenario with respect to insubordination. So, yes, you can't discipline students for the mere possession of a cellphone, but you can discipline students for failing to comply with a reasonable expectation. And so I will tell you, I have no problem, although I don't want to be in that situation. But if students are going to refuse to comply with an expectation, then we're going to have parents, contact parents, and there may be cases where we have to send students home for not complying with a reasonable expectation to not have your cellphone out. Teacher asks you for your phone, turn it over. If you refuse that, that's insubordination.
Thank you. Oh, yes, yes.
I've got one more question for Dr. Burns. Dr. Burns, you mentioned a letter you're going to send out tomorrow. Can you send us that letter also?
Absolutely, yes. I'll send you a fresh, I'll give you all an advanced copy, and you could provide some feedback on it before I send it out.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to a new school year with you. Hello.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Burns. That was awesome. I don't have a ton of different things to share, because, you know, we started implementing this last year at King George Middle School. We had a very successful year. So I thank you all for your guidance on that, Dr. Boyd and Dr. Wright as well. We're not changing much. I know the policy changed a little bit mid-year last year, and we tried to pivot a little bit and really enforce the AirPods and the smart watches, and that was hard mid-year. So I do think those will be the biggest challenges at the middle school. But I'd also like to shout out our students and our parents. Students really got on board. We always were going to have some issues, but when we did have issues, parents were super supportive. And we're looking to partner with them again to make sure that we have another successful year. Obviously, our kids don't have cars, so the expectation is either keep your cellphone at home, keep your cellphone in a locker, or keep your cellphone in a bookbag. And Sergeant Major, you had a great point. The assumption is that the cell phones are turned off if they're in a locker or in a bookbag. I have already sent out a school messenger to families, and it's linked in here, and I think maybe you all have had a chance to see that. It really outlines the policy and my suggestions to families on how to make sure that students do not get in trouble with cell phones. It's essentially the same letter that I sent out last year around the same time, asking them to practice having students not have their cell phones or AirPods or smart watches to kind of get used to what that might be like. We also are going to keep our signage throughout the school, phones away, and enjoy the day. We have those at entrances and in the hallways. It's just a visual reminder for students. And again, I think it worked well last year, so we're not going to change too much with that. We're going to remind staff, when they all come back tomorrow, that the expectation for them is to also not have cell phones out during instructional time. If they do need to do something, it needs to happen during their planning or before or after school on their cell phones as well. But again, our staff were great last year. We don't have any issues with that. What we've asked our teachers to do, what we did last year, and it was pretty effective. We don't want to put them in that situation where they get in the power struggle asking for a student's phone. So what they're going to do, if a student does have their phone out or they see something, is address it with the student and then automatically write a referral. And then we, as administrators, prioritize that, meet with the student as soon as possible. We are the ones who confiscate a phone if we need to contact parents and do all of that. Again, that seemed to work really well last year, so we're going to continue with that. And again, that just kind of kept that power struggle with teachers and students and cell phones out of the classroom. And for the most part, it worked really well. Of course, if a student is just blatantly on a phone and we need to address it immediately, then they call the office, and an administrator goes right there to triage. Yeah, other than that, I don't think we have anything. We're going to use the KGCS policy as far as consequences with that tiered level. Hopefully, we don't ever get past Tier 2 and have to do the 30-day ban. But if we do, we will follow that strictly. I think that's it. Again, I think Dr. Burns covered a lot of what we're already doing. Any questions?
I just have one. It's a small one. And that last comment, when you said, "Use of cell phones may be permitted only in certain instances," I assume that was the same as last year?
Yes.
Did you have any struggles with, I know the high school was specific in the types of things that'd be exempted. You didn't have any struggles with that?
We really didn't. The biggest question we had is, we had late buses, so after instructional day was over, you know, we got the majority of our students out, but we had like four buses that didn't come until 3 o'clock or later. And that was a discussion that we had. Do we want to open up the opportunity for students to access their phones? And we kind of landed on, no, we don't want to open that up. So we didn't, I will be honest, didn't enforce it if we saw it too much. We would remind students, "Hey, you're in the building. Shouldn't have that out." But we also realized other students are on the bus, probably on their phone. So that was maybe the biggest struggle we had. And it wasn't really a struggle. It was just figuring out how to navigate that.
I actually like that, because it allows you to make those decisions rather than... Because when you start identifying, "And this reason, this reason," you can never put enough.
Right.
But when you do this generally, and the way it was handled, that sounds very good, and especially since it worked. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. And Dr. Burns hit the nail on the head, too. Like, there are times when, you know, we're calling from the school. We can't get an answer. But if a student uses their cellphone, the parent answers immediately. So, you know, if we do have to get in touch with the parent, we may allow cellphone use for that, but that's rare.
Anyone else?
Yes, Dr. Nice, I wanted to say thank you for your diligence, because last year, I know there was several times other board members and I walked through the building and super impressive that the kids were interacting and not on their cellphone, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. It was great. We were happy to see it, too.
Although the cafeteria was a little noisier, but that was good.
Noisy is sometimes okay, I think.
Mrs. Cleveland?
So I wanted to say thank you, because I know that you did an outstanding job last year. And I'm happy to see that you have that foundation now, since this is law. But I was thinking that I know that there was some struggles. And what do you attribute, I guess, your success at the middle school of keeping the cell phones at bay?
I think honestly, it's that communication to parents so they knew what the expectation was, so then they could share it with their students. We also do, maybe not first week of school, but the first, you know, 10 days or so, we have student assemblies with each grade level, and we are very clear what the expectations were with our students as well. And then we remind them frequently, you know, through announcements or other messages, you know, "Hey, you're doing a great job with this. Let's keep it up." Or, "Hey, you know, we're struggling. You know, some students are, you know, using their AirPods or whatever the case may be, so we need to make sure that we're being vigilant with that." And reminding staff, too, to stay vigilant, because sometimes that is hard. You know, they just want to teach, and if a student's not disrupting them, then they're like, "Okay, just go ahead and do that." But again, because we continue to address it with staff, they continue to address it with students.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, I do want to say that you did a phenomenal job last year. Yes, and you're a good example of how to enforce policies and procedures and still be very kind and engaging with the students, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Nice, for all of it, for all you do.
Thank you, Sergeant Major.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you.
Well, this is not my first time being up here, but it's my first time as principal. I'm Lori Wages, Principal of King George Elementary School.
I'm Sandy Eli, Principal at Sealston.
Billy Teague, Principal at Potomac Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Burns, Dr. Nice. I like your sign. Dr. Nice, phones away and enjoy your day. So after talking with Sandy and Billy, we decided to put together just kind of all-in-one, because realistically, it's not as large of a problem. I hate to say that stuff out loud, you know, you don't want to create a problem. But it's really hasn't been as large a problem at the elementary school level. I have not even been involved in it really at the preschool level, so I hadn't even heard about it. But these two ladies were and said that, you know, everybody did a really good job last year. So we are going to have pretty much the same thing. However, it's just keep it at home or keep it in your backpack powered off. So cellphone and smart watches is what I heard you said, right? Smart watches is kind of what we saw a little bit more of in the higher elementary level, so... And we're just going to communicate that on our newsletter, on our website. Anything going at home, we'll do a school messenger as well that, just regarding his, the governor's expectations and our code. And I think just making sure that policy is out there. I know I have it in my staff meeting for tomorrow with the actual policy links so that our staff can go right to it. And again, then just communicating that our expectations for them, our staff, is that it's a non-negotiable for the students and that we are going to also model that behavior. So we have, I have quite a few bullets on my point about what that looks like and how I can support the staff to, you know, why might you need a phone? Because a lot of our teachers will use it for different things, like timers and things. But we can, we're going to kind of troubleshoot that. And what else can we do? Can I, can I, can I help you with something else that, can I get you a timer? Can I, you know, what else can we put in place so that whatever you might need that phone for, we can do something different? So I think really, that's going to be it with our elementary staff, is just kind of troubleshooting those things, because, you know, we all have ideas of how we want to do things. Anything else you wanted to add to that piece?
For us, the issue with smart watches isn't just the older grades. It's actually the younger grades. I have first graders who'll have a smart watch. That's how their parents want to get in touch with them, and they keep track of them that way. So for us, that is a concern. I think I confiscated one cellphone last year in the entire school of 700 kids, so that wasn't bad. But the smart watches are a reminder that those need to be away and off as well, because those are those distractions, because they receive texts. They have location indicators, and for our parents, that is one of the concerns. So I think that that's, that education piece now is reminding parents that those need to stay at home or stay away anyways. Yeah.
Similar at Potomac. I had one cellphone violation last year. Was really able to talk to the parent about that and what we were going to do going forward. So communication with the families is a big piece of that, because sometimes they aren't aware that a cellphone comes to school. So we definitely talk to families about that, but not a huge problem at elementary. We definitely wanted to work together to make sure we're consistent across the schools and that we're not communicating different messages, but...
And the rest of it is really just the same level of consequences. Again, we really don't get past that parent phone call piece. Like Miss Teague said, sometimes they don't even know their child has that, and they usually support what we're talking with them about. So, and then again, those cell phones only in certain instances. And really, it's just some sort of medical plan or need on their 504 IP health plan type thing, so... Yeah, that's all. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
Good, thank you so much. I really think it's valuable for all three of you to come together with the same policy. That's extremely helpful, because the moment you start to see, well, Potomac has this, and King George L. has this, and so on, you know, then all of a sudden, it can post, praises to all three of you for putting that together as one policy. No, it's really good.
And we like each other a lot, so it's super helpful.
That's helpful, yeah. Well, and I would encourage you, even with some other things. You know, the more that you can unite as three elementary schools, the more it unites the whole county and the whole division. And I think it's wonderful, beginning at the lower levels. That even shows that unity going forward all the way to high school, so thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for all you do. Thank you.
Mrs. Hoover?
Just echo everybody else. Thank you so much. If we nip it here, it won't be a problem. As we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to the new school year with you guys.
Dr. Ward, just on the same subject. Did we get our policy brought up to date with the 504? That statement, were we going to put into 504? Yes, okay. We're all good there.
All right. Consent agenda. Just make a motion.
All right, consent agenda. Just make a motion. Can we get a motion to pass the consent agenda, or is there any changes needed?
Madam Chair, if I can. So are you thinking we put all these together and just?
Yeah, it's unless there's a change needed, right?
I think that's fine. Is there, I guess the question would be, does anybody, is there one of those that minutes that somebody wants to talk about, we'll take that out of it and then approve the rest of them?
We're not going to be able to approve them together because I wasn't in attendance of the re-admittance hearing or the special meeting.
Oh, did it have your name there?
She just recused herself, right?
Oh, I see. I see. Okay. Yeah, okay. We'll pull that one out, then. That's.
Got that.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay, so Erin says it would be better if we pulled the regular meeting out, approved that.
Okay.
And then the others would be Carrie Wood, in present.
All right. Can I get a motion to?
Yes, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the regular minutes for the July 7, 2025 regular meeting as presented.
Second. Properly second.
My second.
Okay. Motion passes? Or all those approve?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Bear with me, I'm covering for our chair.
You're doing well.
All right. And then, so now we have to make a motion for some changes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the July 23, 2025 special meeting as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion with one abstain because she was absent. Mrs. Cleveland. Motion passes. Okay.
Action items.
So now we're on the action items. King George Middle School Student Lab Refreshure?
Yes, Madam Chair. So in your packet, you have King George Middle School Lab Refresh. The reason we bring this to you this evening is it's a purchase requisition in the excess of $50,000 as per policy. This is money that we have in our current operating budget to update the personal computers in our middle school lab. It is my recommendation this evening as superintendent to approve a motion to issue a purchase order in the amount of $106,800 for the King George Middle School Student Lab PC Refresh.
All right. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we issue a purchase order in the amount of $106,800 for the King George Middle School Student Lab PC Refresh.
A second.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm just one, I'm assuming obviously this was expected, this amount?
Yes.
Okay, it's not much of a, okay. That's all.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Sorry, Mrs. Hoover. All right. And then the FY 2425 year-end budget reallocations.
Madam Chair, so this is the annual process. We do this every year. We're at the point where we have to prepare our end-of-the-year budget for the audit process and just budget balancing. So every year, through Sherri Williams and Ms. Cobb on the county office, they work through the finer details of this. We request an approval this evening from the King George County School Board. And then tomorrow night, with an approval from the school board, I'll take that to the Board of Supervisors and request approval from the Board of Supervisors, specifically speaking, and this has to be in the motion. So it is recommended that the school board by motion approve the King George County School request to reappropriate $1,420,897 from the Instruction category to, I won't read all the numbers, to Homebound, the Office of the Principal, Board Services, Executive Admin, Fiscal Services, Attendance Intervention, Transportation, Vehicle Operation, Building Service, Operation Maintenance and Technology. I can speak to any of those transfers if you would like me to. But again, I'm requesting a motion to approve that reappropriation this evening.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the King George County School reappropriation of $1,420,800, excuse me, $1,420,897 from the Instructional category of 61100 to Homebound, 61230, Office of the Principal, 6140, Board Services, 62110, Executive Admin, 62120, Fiscal Services, 62160, Attendance Intervention, 62210, Transportation, 63100, Vehicle Operation, 63200, Building Services, 64200, Operation and Maintenance, 66200, Technology, 68200 for year-end reconciliation.
My second.
Properly second. Any discussion?
I have a question about the high dollar one. What is it, the Office of the Principal?
That's the Office of the Principal. So that was, if you remember, roughly about a year ago at this time, we were discussing restructuring in our special education program. So as opposed to going to our Board of Supervisors and requesting additional positions, this was a number of instructional positions that we recoded into special education assistant principals that we positioned at each one of our schools so that they could satisfy only requirements that administrators can meet through the special education process. So we took existing money in the Instructional category for those salaries and moved them into the Office of the Principal because now their official title is Assistant Principal of Special Education. So that's a total of five positions. That's why the amount's high.
So, okay, thank you. And I don't think I was on the board at that time, so I just, you guys.
I remember that, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Dr. Boyd, I'm assuming there were none of these that were more than 5 or 10% below or above what they were last year, or were they all?
You mean the total amount?
Yes.
No, nothing that was a major swing, other than that one.
Then the one, right, right. That's the only one that, okay, that's all.
All right. All those.
All right, Dr. Boyd, I see one down here, Attendance Intervention. Is that still the all-in? Are we still?
Most of it's, we still have this year to use all-in money, but this is, this would not have been all-in money. This would have been money for other things that we were doing at first attendance initiatives through JESM.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Do you have any questions or comments for the discussion?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, can I roll call? Because it's money, right? So we have to do a roll call. All right?
Aye. Yeah.
Aye.
Mrs. Hoover?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And now we're moving on to the discussion items, bullying reporting process.
Yes, Madam Chair. So as you know, one of our main themes this year is school safety and security. We've really taken a dive into that as board members and really in the school board office. We've had conversations about weapon detection systems, e-hall pass, a number of things that we're doing to improve our safety and security. The topic of bullying has been one that obviously has been on our minds and the minds of some of those in our community. And so we, Dr. Wright does come before you this evening to really kind of provide an update on a lot of the background conversation that's occurred in making sure that that process is solid moving forward. So, Dr. Wright?
Thank you, members of the board. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present an update on what we've done since we last met as far as some of our revisions. So Ms. Higgins has put up our website, and she will point to where parents or students can go and find our bullying form. What we did is we took our BINT form, B-I-N-T, which stands for Bullying is Not Tolerated, and we put that on our website. And Mrs. Skauf, as well as some of our counselors, worked together to create and borrowed actually from the middle school a form that they had already created. So we took that and we made an electronic form to make it more accessible for parents, for students to report bullying. They can, they can sign their name, or they can fill it out and do it anonymously if they want to share about someone else that was bullied, but they don't want to get wrapped into the reporting. So we do have that, and we're working with principals and assistant principals now on developing some procedures and guidelines. To do that, we have assigned principals to monitor this, and then they are able to delegate that to most likely a counselor. And assistant principal will be the key folks to monitor this. So as those come in, that we can report what's happening. There are some guidelines as far as the procedures that we are still in draft form, but most of these are laid out for us in some of the updated policies that you'll be receiving either tonight or at the next board meeting, and also in code in regards to notification of parents and so forth. So we've, we've taken those guidelines and we've put them into a procedure so that those who are working on it know that when it comes in, they have 24 hours to reach out and to contact the parents and make sure that they're aware if the parents received it. Obviously, we've got it, we've got your message, and this is what we're doing, and this is what we're doing. Maybe to ask some follow-up questions of the student, to ask some follow-up questions of the parent at that time. And then we have the next piece of that is five school days to complete the investigation and follow back up with the parent as to, this is what was done. As many times, I think, I heard last meeting, there's a report and we don't know what happened. So there's no follow-up, and it just kind of disappears. Or the parents are having to call back five or six or a week later saying, what happened? We reported this incident. So that should happen within five school days. And then there would be some formal, if there is cyberbullying, which is a new, and it's not new to us, but it's new in terms of code and policy. If that is reported, then there are some guidelines there that we will need to share, which is a list of support services and resources available, which we would include for any version of bullying. It's just they specified cyberbullying, but we would take that list of resources and provide that for any student that was bullied or perceived bullying. Because honestly, regardless of whether it meets the definition or not, there's some concern, there's some trauma, and we want to provide resources for those parents and students. So that is our update. We are still well on our way and still in draft form, but we're getting lots of feedback from the administrators, principals and assistant principals so that we can refine the process and be ready to go when school starts. Any questions?
Yes. First of all, thank you so much. I'm just, I know you showed the site, but I just went to our site just on the internet, and it was very easy to find bullying prevention, just like you showed us. And how wonderful this is going to be for parents, you know, when they call one of us or something, you say, well, if you want to report, it's right there on their site. Just go to the King George County School site, and you'll see it right there, bullying prevention. So thank you. This is wonderful. I can't give enough praises about how good this is for bullying. I do have one where it says the World Day of Bullying Prevention, which is the first Monday of each October. Are we doing anything special here at King George for that?
Middle school always does. At this time, a poster will say that we're going to stop bullying, that we're going to do it that way.
Okay. Okay.
And Ms. Fisher does a few things across the division. We have, for a few years now, we've had a number of anti-bullying prevention things on that day. Yeah.
All right. I just didn't know. Same, same things we've been doing, nothing necessarily any different. It's okay. It's fine.
I don't know necessarily that day, but I know we have been meeting with our principals, definitely meeting with our all levels to talk about what we can do differently this year, especially to make sure that, that it's recognizable and that students and parents and any visitors will notice when they walk in that bullying is not tolerated, and that's something that we take seriously.
That's good.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Dr. Wright. Was reading today some, some stuff online about parents wanting to move their children out of their schools because of bullying, and what they want to do is put them in virtual Virginia. And they're saying they're not having any progress with that because it's, they've been told that it's full or whatever. I'm not a proponent of virtual Virginia at all. I think kids should be in the classroom. You know, someone said in order to be human, you have to be around humans. But I think we need to, you know, get with the five principals that are here, Dr. Boyd and, and yourself, and come up with something that's really good and substantial as far as bullying goes. I know that's what you're working on, and thank you for the work you've done. But we have to, we have to inform the, the community of what we're doing so that parents are not afraid to send their kids to school.
No, I agree. That's, that's very important. There is sometimes a perception that that bullying is more prominent at one school or another school. And, and until we can change the perception, that might continue. So our message to the community and our messaging is what we're talking about in terms of sort of promotion of what we are doing and what's not acceptable in terms of bullying is very important. What this is helping in, the current procedure is helping in promoting and increasing our communication with our parents, because I think that was a piece that was lacking. So we're working on that currently. But the overall messaging from a, from a division standpoint, I think we can certainly work on that as far as communication and just the constants of your children are safe, we do not tolerate this, and these, and we want your kids in our schools, and we want to take care of them and protect them and keep them safe. So I think doing that and also the messaging of that certainly are key. So we'll work on those things as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for this. It's very good.
Madam Chair, just one more thing. And you know what I think one of the key things will be with this is that within 24-hour response, once we start to do that, because I think that was a little bit of a problem in the past, and part of that was because of lack of, you know, access to communication about how to do all the reporting. But that'll start to get around is, oh, no, you know, it won't always be exactly what everybody wants, but if they're hearing about it within 24 hours, that's going to get around, and that's going to be huge is if we respond that quickly. So to me, that is kind of, the communication is huge, and the response time is also very big. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Wright, because I think that last, I think last meeting, maybe it was last meeting or the meeting before, we actually talked about this. And the communication out to the parents, and I was saying, I, as a parent, didn't know the process. And I want to thank Amanda for sending out that communication. I did get that. And I think that was really helpful. And I think staying in front of the parents so that they understand and know where that report is. I know for me, being a parent, it's helpful. So thank you for that. Thank you for the follow-up, because this was great.
Yes, Dr. Wright, I went and watched the last board meeting. And I do want to say, he did answer my questions. I think I told you, Dr. Boyd, I just wanted to know that we are attacking this strongly. And I see that, and I'm thankful for that. I'm really excited to see that this form can be completed by someone else rather than the person being bullied. I think that's going to be huge. That, that's great. The only thing I think I would like to see following through with this is not only just notifying the parents, but ensuring that it's closed, that everything's been done, and not just forgotten about once that first phone call is made and the concerns are discussed, but that, but that the report is finalized. Yes.
To make sure. Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Hoover, do you have anything to say?
Thank you, Dr. Wright.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then we have a discussion item, policy updates.
Yes, Madam Chair. So we are in our second batch of VSBA policy updates, and I can certainly do what the board's pleasure is. I think last time you guys had me just go through the policies. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look at them. There's not a whole lot of large substantive changes to many of them, which you'll see is common themes that came out of the General Assembly that are now being, you know, applied to many of our existing policies. So if it's the pleasure of the board, I can go through those quickly and...
We do have one on here that we want to discuss, and that was the Code of Conduct. So when you get to that, we'll want to discuss that a little bit.
Student Conduct, JFC?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'll go through, and then you can stop me when you need to and ask any questions. Sound good? All right. So I'm starting with DF, or excuse me, DJF. This is just an update of our purchasing procedures. Again, nothing more than a reference to Virginia Code. That new reference in the Virginia Code, if you remember from last time, has to do with child labor laws. So all they, all they've done in this policy is updated to the specific code reference. Instead of 22.1-4311.4, or excuse me, .3, it's now .4. And it's, if you pull that code up, it's in reference to child labor laws.
Madam Chair, do we want to make a motion for each one of these unless there's a question about them? Or do we want to go through all of them and do it together?
I, I think the fastest, most efficient way. Does anybody want to?
Do all of them together?
Except for the conduct.
I think we can go through them all except for the code and conduct. We can save that one for last.
Okay.
And then just make one motion at the end?
Okay. Okay. I'll just keep going through and stop me if you need to.
Good.
EBB is Threat Assessment Teams. What this does is add some new language for some of our responsibilities following a threat. And it has to do with triaging the situation and making sure we're providing resources to families following a threat assessment. You can see those three bullets there that talk about some of the things that we do, you know, in the process or following a threat assessment. Okay. Next is GCBD-E. This is an exhibit. Why it's an exhibit, I don't know. Why it's an exhibit, I don't know. It was many, many moons ago. But what it was, was our professional leave request form. It really kind of begs the question that we've been discussing in the school board office. There are some forms that are in the school board policy manual, and obviously, many forms that are not. We use forms all the time. So I, we've discussed, we've done it both ways. We've actually updated this form to be accurate if the board desires to keep the form in the policy manual, or it's kind of begged the question at the school board office as to whether or not we, the board would like us to keep forms in the policy manual. We have policies, and we have regulations that address all of these matters. For example, this one here, we have a policy that references professional leave, and we have a regulation that references professional leave that the board creates and approves. The form is only part of the practice that we employ so that the teacher can, or staff member can request professional leave. So this one's a bit unique. I'll continue to go through these, but we can think about that as we go. Do we want to, as a general practice, do we think it's wise to keep forms in our policy manual? If so, we have them updated. If not, that's something, that's a marching orders that we can go back with and update our policy manual accordingly.
Yes. Do you have a comment?
Oh, I definitely have a question about. Why does, what criteria is VSBA using to decide which ones will, forms will be in policy and which ones won't? I mean, what's there?
Good question. This is not VSBA. This was local, this was a local, this is us before we were, this was a long time ago. In fact, don't quote me on this, but I think the last time this form was updated was 2016, maybe 2013?
Mr. Bush?
2009, 2009.
When me and Dr. Boyd spoke about it, it had to do with money, most of them, like teacher reimbursement, tuition reimbursement. So that's what we were talking about.
Professional leave, all of those things. Now, all of those money issues, denominations, all of those things are laid out in our policy, your policy, and laid out in the regulation that references the form. And again, there's a bit of inequity, because there's a number of forms that we use across the school division. The bullying form that we're just talking about is not one that the school board's going to approve. So it's really a matter of philosophy and how the board wants to move forward. We're prepared to go in either way with an updated form or with a policy and regulation that references the board's desires and just a form to inform the practice of employing the regulation. If that makes sense.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would suggest that the forms not be a part of the policy, because we probably update the forms all the time, which means we would have to update the policy. We could reference the form but not have the form part of the policy. That's my suggestion.
I agree with that totally.
I do. Nobody was here when that was put into place on why they would only put certain forms. So I am curious to know why they did that. But if we don't have the answer to that, it is more efficient just to leave staff to do the forms that fit their needs that follow policy.
So I agree totally, but there are obviously, then you have some inequities. You have some, we just have forms over here in our files and guidelines or whatever, and then others are in policy. Are we asking Dr. Boyd and his staff to go through all of the policies that we have that have forms and take them out?
I guess as they need...
Or are we going to deal with it one at a time?
How about as we update them?
Have to update them.
Like 10 or 12 at a time.
In order to, yeah, let's, as we update them, let's take it out of the policy and put it into a regulation.
Is that the collective desire of the board? Is that philosophy? Because if it is, we can run with those marching orders and make sure that we bring the ones that exist in the policy manual right now to you to strike. And then moving forward, it'll really make it, we always have the levers of the regulation and the policy to adjust, but it'll really make it more accessible to our staff to be able to adjust this policy without it being a real formal affair.
Yes.
And we need a motion for that.
We'll do, we can pull that one out separately if that's okay. All right. And there's already, is the next one the only one tonight?
Two, yes.
I think there's, okay, so the next one is, I'm continuing down the list now.
I have a question.
GC, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this one that we're talking about is the professional leave request reimbursement. And so you're saying that we take the form out because we have a policy on professional leave request reimbursement? We just don't, we can't see it right now.
You can't see it in the updates, but it's in our policy manual.
Okay. And so this...
Just the form.
This form is a result from that policy.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll have...
It has, it's just, I don't have the policy to, like, cross-reference it right now. So that's why I'm just making...
So moving forward, what we can do, if we're going to strike a policy, we can include the, no, excuse me, if we're going to strike a form, we'll include the policy and/or regulation.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Want to wait?
It has the policy on there.
Yeah, and we can wait until they come about. That's why...
And that's what, that's what we're recommending, rather than having them go through the hole. Okay.
Okay, so tonight, we'll set those aside?
Two.
We can, I think we have two tonight, right?
And with the marching orders to go forward, yeah.
Okay. So that's the next one. So the GCBC-F is also a form for professional employee tuition assistance. Again, we'll set this one aside. That's another form that exists in our policy manual. So now I'm on to GCL if there's no further questions about, about that. So GCL is professional staff development. Again, this is a, well, first what you'll see is some grammatical changes. The VSBA went from Roman numerals to bullets, as we've seen in the past, and they, I won't go through all the grammatical things. One of the substantive changes in this came out of the General Assembly this year. It's really that paragraph that's at the end of page two, and it talks about autism spectrum disorder and making sure that you provide professional development for teachers. We currently do that. I've talked to Dr. Howard about that, so we're comfortable passing this policy this evening as we already have a practice in place. If you continue to go down to the paragraph on the middle of page four, this also is new that came out of the General Assembly this year, and it talks about the total amount of professional development a teacher can receive in a certain time period. And we're, I'm actually working with school board office staff right now to make sure that we fall within those parameters in terms of total professional development time. We feel pretty comfortable about where we are right now in terms of that. They break it down into academic professional development time and anything that's outside of academic professional development time, like the trainings that we have to do at the beginning of the year and so on. So that one, we are comfortable passing right now with the new recommendations from the General Assembly. I'll keep going. Now I'm on to IGAG. This is teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. This talks about the, and this again is a theme that we've seen in some of the policies going forward. We've already approved some policies like this, but it talks about the instruction on opioid overdose prevention and reversal in our secondary schools. It talks about the training program. We talked about this last year, and this is just codified in Virginia Code now.
Now, Dr. Boyd, that has to be taught within the first two weeks, I think it said?
Yeah. Ironically, when we pulled the code again, VSBA made a mistake and didn't include that in the policy. We have that in our policy, and we've included it in here because we do want to approve it in that fashion. But we did get word from VSBA that, for whatever reason, they omitted that in the update. We kept it in the update, and it does have to be, that process has to start within the first two weeks of the school year.
That's taught by the PE?
Yes, sir. Correct. Now I'm on IGBD, Programs for Students with Reading Deficiencies. So again, you guys know that last year, we spent a lot of time talking about the Virginia Literacy Act, and this, again, codifies in Virginia Code and also through policy. IGBD, many of the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act and the, specifically, the reading intervention services that are provided. And you can see all those in bullet forms. This is an entirely new policy that is going to replace another policy that will omit, I think it's next. IGBD. Next is IKG. This one is omitted now because the previous policy is much more in detail, and it really takes the place of remediation recovery programs. IKG. Now I'm on to JC. JC has to do with our school attendance zones. This just really turned into what is an update of a cross-reference for school admission. JFC is next. This is student conduct. We wanted to set this one aside. Let's see if I can go through the new update. The new update in terms of this has to do with cyberbullying. Dr. Wright touched on it this evening. It really defines cyberbullying, and it talks about how we deal with a cyberbullying incident in terms of providing services and remediation strategies and triaging that particular instance. It also references the fact that, you know, even if this does occur outside of school, it's something that we can address. JFC. JHCD, administering medicines to students. What this is, is on page, I believe it begins on page two. It just frees any individual who applies an opioid antagonist. That individual's not liable for any, anything adverse that happens if they determine that an opioid antagonist is required.
To anyone?
Anyone that's qualified to administer it. Mm-hmm. Where am I, KBA?
KBA.
All right. This is a lot. I don't think we have this much next time. Request for Public Records. Again, they put a title in this, penalties on that one paragraph, and it talks about the required training that the FOIA officer needs to complete in a two-year calendar Moving on, KGD, notification of school-connected student overdoses. Again, this is an entirely new policy. This came through the General Assembly last year. I believe, if you guys remember, this originated in Loudoun County. This is just the requirement of the school division now if that, if there is a school, if there is perceived to be a school-connected student overdose, drug overdose, then the school has a responsibility in making sure parents are aware of that. Okay?
Dr. Boyd, along those same lines, we talked last year about NarCam and some of our students and teachers having NarCam. Did we ever do any more with that? I mean, does...
I can tell you, at the next school board meeting, you're going to get about four policies that talk about where we are in some of those practices. Mrs. Fisher is working with our building-level nurses and our division nurse to really bring some of those policies up to practice, and I think if I remember correctly, that'll be in our next policy batch on the 18th.
Okay.
Part of that.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is that going to include who's qualified to administer, because it's my understanding that you can get that in, there's really no qualifications. You pick it up, and you get like a two-minute, here's how you use it. So there's really not, quote, a qualification.
I think it is a pretty low level, if I remember correctly, to be qualified. I know we have a number of practices right now in the school division where staff and students can get that qualification. I think, I'm pretty sure, don't quote me on this, I'll be prepared to speak to this at the next board meeting, but I'm pretty sure we reference that level of qualification before administration occurs.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I'm on the final policy. This is KQ. This is, the name of this policy is Commercial Promotional and Corporate Sponsorships and Partnerships. Again, you'll see a common theme here. All of this is, is our relationship with those entities and updating Virginia law in terms of child labor and making sure that those sponsorship organizations adhere to those same regulations that we're adhering to in the school division.
Madam Chair, as I see this, I don't mind making a motion, but we would pull out two of those, the GCBD and the GCBC, and then also the deleted one is a separate motion, the IKG, and also the JFC. So I can make a motion for the rest of those as he discussed them. So Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the policy updates for DJF, EBB, GCL, IGAG.
Let's, can we hold that one out for a little bit?
Which one was that?
The IGAG, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco. Can we hold that out for...
Which one, what was the number of that one again?
IGAG.
IGAG, okay. Pull that one out. All right. Let me repeat them again. DJF, EBB, GCL, IGBD, JC, JHCD, KBA, KGD, and KQ. I made a motion to approve those updates.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and just do this. I make a motion that we delete the policy IKG.
Properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I assume the other ones will hold for now, or whatever you want to do. We can...
Discuss them now.
Start discussing them now.
Yes.
The IGAG, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco. I just want to make sure that we're giving, that we're teaching enough about that to give the students the information that they need about fentanyl and, you know, other drugs that are out there. We get caught up so much in SOWs that we forget to teach the real-life things that are out there. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're doing that. I don't, maybe the principals can come up with some suggestions of how better to do it, and if that's the way, well, how to do it better in their schools, but I think that's a real concern.
Dr. Boyd, we've had the discussion before. The students have the DARE program through the fifth grade, and then when they hit middle school and high school, it's kind of like, oh, they, that's gone. And I'm not sure, like Mr. Frank said, we definitely need to do something to continue that education, because the threat is greater as the, as the students, you know, become more independent.
Absolutely. And we do have a program in place that we can certainly provide you guys an update on so that you can speak to it to the community and make sure they understand what we're doing through the physical education program. This policy specifically is updated in this, the added requirement now is so that we teach our, really, it's students, it's our high school students, it's grades nine through 12, the opioid antagonists, you're making sure that they're prepared to understand what it would take to reverse the effects of an opioid, if that makes sense. So the added requirement is to include that in the curriculum for the nine through 12 students. But I'll see if we can work with Ms. Fisher and see if we can really kind of make sure that we're prepared to provide that information to the board and to our community.
You know, I went through Friday night, I think it was, with YouTube, and went through and looked at a bunch of these YouTube videos that are out there as far as drug and fentanyl and, you know, awareness programs that are there. Some of them we got, some of them were not all that great, but, you know, anything we can get to increase the awareness with our students will be helpful.
Dr. Boyd, my question would be, are, fentanyl is becoming a growing issue. I mean, opioids have been, opioids have been there, and that's a real problem. I don't disagree. But fentanyl is kind of like, are we, are we in our teaching of all this pulling out? I guess what I'm saying is, is I would hate to simply include fentanyl as part of the whole opioid thing. It is so much more deadly, and they're all deadly. I don't want to be misquoted in this. But fentanyl is at another whole level. So I assume that we're teaching that. I'm...
I believe, I believe we specifically speak to it, but we'll be prepared next time to make sure that we provide you guys with an update on that specific curriculum.
Dr. Boyd, and I know we did a lot of things last year, but a lot of times, it was in the afternoon, and a lot of people didn't show up. We had, we also had one where Kathy, Mrs. Hoover helped put it together. Robin worked really hard, Mrs. Mitchell, to get that going. And we had a good turnout on that one, too. But what, to piggyback off what he is saying is, do we teach about marijuana? Because that's known as the gateway one, gateway drug, and it, even if they don't go past that, it's still, it's, they lose their drive when they get stuck on that kind of that, it's still, it's, they lose their drive when they get stuck on that kind of stuff.
Yeah, there's really a drug education program that addresses many, you know, just education on those substances that we've taught for some time now.
Okay.
And most all of it's coming through our physical education program because that's where we have access to all of our students, and really, the health curriculum is where it fits best.
Yeah.
Mr. Frank, I guess you wanted to discuss this, not necessarily make a change, was that correct?
I just wanted to discuss it.
Okay. So I make a motion that we approve the I G A G update as presented.
Second.
Properly second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Aye.
Is there any more sitting out there right now?
J F C.
Student conduct.
Okay, we have the two forms still sitting out there, and then the J F C.
You want to do the forms now? Basically, we're just approving to strike them, correct?
Yes. You can do them tonight if you're comfortable, or we can bring them back to you next time and with, with the associated policy and regulation.
I think, Madam Chair, if I, no, I think this would go along with what you're saying. There's, this is a policy that would regard all of these, and there may be a policy in which, what I'm thinking is similar to what Ms. Cleveland had just mentioned, and that is that, you know, we see the form and then let's read the policy. The form doesn't have to be part of the policy, but maybe before we just strike them all, let's look at them. Is that what you were suggesting?
Yeah.
So maybe next time then, not that you have to bring all of them, but these two, and as others come in, you know, we'll look at the form and then the policy together.
Sounds good.
And then probably, hopefully, then we'll end up moving the form out of the policy. That will be the idea. I'm sorry.
That's good direction, we appreciate it.
I don't think that needs...
No motion tonight, we'll just, we'll table it.
All right, and then...
The J F C.
Now the J F C discussion. Mr. Frank?
Student code of conduct.
Yes, what I'm looking at, it's, is the bullying that's there, but also we get down to trespassing, students including, students are prohibited. Yes, it's the last page. Use of profane or obscene language and conduct. I mean, you know, we've seen obscene language in schools forever, and we always tell the students, you know, don't do that or whatever, but, I mean, it's in our code of conduct that it's prohibited. So maybe this is something, again, that principals can, you know, come up with in their schools with, you know. In some cases, unfortunately, it's a culture thing, so, you know, that's, that's kind of hard to, for us to, to stop, but hopefully we can make, you know, put some awareness there somewhere.
Yeah, make sure that when folks come into our building, our students, our community, our families, they know what the expectation is in our building. I understand that.
Anyone else?
Also, I think it's important with any of these kinds of things is our staff also, it's, it's, language, profane language is becoming so much more acceptable in our culture. It doesn't mean it is acceptable because I have a problem with it, a big one. However, we can't deny that culturally it is, it is just everywhere now. And so it might be valuable that as we, as adults, administrators, teachers, staff, and everybody, that we show the example of using the best, and this isn't any recommendation to do anything, just a comment that I think a lot of the students look at, those teachers, staff, administrators, board members, is what language are we using? That's all, it's just a comment.
Yeah, I wanted to address this. Ms. Hoover, do you have anything to say? Comments or questions?
Nope, I don't.
Okay. Mrs. Cleveland? You're good? Not yet. Oh, okay, sorry. So I would like to see, the other side of bullying is because the students aren't the only ones that get bullied oftentimes, it's the staff and teachers as well. And when I say bully, but cussed at, attacked, threatened constantly to where they're in fear to even go to work, and it doesn't feel safe. I've heard that in our schools. So I would like to see, or if we have this in a policy where, how are we going to protect our teachers and our staff? And I would like to see consequences almost stricter, that if a student attacks a teacher verbally or physically, like, what's going to happen to that student?
I appreciate that, Ms. Davis, and I'm sure all of our staff does.
I, yeah.
Yeah, that's something that certainly we, we take serious at the building level, and with your support and the board's support, something that we feel...
Well, I would like to add, yes, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. I would like to add it, if we can, or if it's not in one of our policies, or if you know where the policy is, that also be reinforced to the students, or added to this policy because it's the victim, I keep saying student as the victim, but I don't know, but I think we need to do that. Because our teachers need to feel safe.
I think that's a very good point, Madam Chair. To add something about the students are expected to not be verbally abusive to staff members of any kind, something along those lines. I think that's an excellent idea.
So do I.
Talk to, talk to the administrators, Dr. Boyd, and see what they think, and maybe put something in there for next...
Yeah, I'm thinking something as simple as where it says student, we can just change it to, we can, we can put any person, any, you can put student slash staff, you can put any person who was a victim, really make it a little more inclusive than just, than just student. I don't, again, I mean, this is V S B A update, that would turn into a locally revised policy, not a problem, but I think the idea and intent is one that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis, I think that's a great idea.
Maybe bring it back next...
Mrs. Cleveland?
So, is that because we don't have a policy on that? Because I would think that we would have something about that in a policy, because it kind of implies not just the language and speaking poorly to a teacher, but also, you know, the cyberbullying and all these things, so...
I think we, I mean, we have, have policies and, you know, on code of conduct, and we have things of that nature. I don't ever hear the terms bullying and staff being associated together, though.
Including staff on staff, too, by the way.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so there, we do, you know, our discipline matrix, the stuff we talked about at last school board meeting with ESPAR, and all the violations that occur. All of those things reference our expectations for our students towards our staff. It's in our, it's in, there's references to that in our student family handbook and code of conduct already mentioned. But again, I don't ever see the concept or the terms of bullying and it being associated with anything other than really students. It's often just isolated to students, but I think that can, I think to change that word from students to person includes you guys, it includes all of us, it includes our staff most certainly.
And I would like that, or we would, I'm sure, I'd like that to be pushed with the, what we're doing with the bullying.
I'm sure that every teacher or former teacher in this room has been verbally abused at one time or another by students.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know...
That's right.
I think if they see it at a high level like that, like, oh, they don't even play with the teachers, let alone their neighbor student next to them.
So do I have a motion from the board, or would you like me to go a little deeper and rewrite this in some way, or is it as simple as changing the word student to person?
Personally, just before a motion, I'd like to see, I think it's a great idea, although I'd like to see a little further discussion, maybe with your staff, get some more input, but I think the idea is absolutely outstanding, but then come back maybe with some input, whether it is just changing a word, or whether we need to add a sentence or a paragraph as to, you know, we're talking about students bullying staff members. And I would not just say teachers, obviously, we would include...
I, I want to push it even as far as not even a bullying situation. Like, if you're in class and this kid just cusses out a teacher in front of the whole class.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm agreeing. I would add that, yeah, it's a given. I would put those together. But I would just recommend that, let's not, let's not do something hastily that we say, oh, we should have added this, you see what I'm saying? So...
I agree.
I would like to suggest we have and bring it back next time.
Yes, Dr. Boyd, if you can come back at our next meeting or two meetings, if whatever, because they're going to be busy in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be the next board meeting.
It does have to be the next board meeting, but, and then come back a little deeper into what, like, like you were saying.
Okay, so we do need to, some of this reference to cyberbullying is codified in code, in Virginia code, so we do need to match our policy to Virginia code. So I would recommend, if it's okay with the board, that we approve this tonight so that we've got it set for the beginning of the school year, and then come back and revise it when we...
Or make it separate and on...
We'll, we'll bring it back separate with maybe updates, maybe...
Yeah, I think, yeah, he's saying, we really do need to approve this as before the school year starts, and then he'll make sure it's on the agenda, maybe not the next meeting, but within, before October or something, that it will be on the agenda.
Correct.
Ms. Hoover? She agreed earlier.
Okay.
I agree, yeah.
Do you want me to, I don't, I don't have to make all the motions. I'd like to, I make a motion that we approve the J F C code of conduct as presented.
Second. Properly second, all those in, is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Got everything? All right. Weapons detections.
Yes, Madam Chair, so this was a placeholder. I know the board wanted to just keep this on our agenda to just continue the discussion. I think in our buildup to this meeting, we kind of talked about providing just a bit of an update. I can tell you, our staff has been working diligently from, from a number of different lenses. From the technology standpoint, they've really worked on some, working out some of the bugs and making sure that the devices are working properly, and just some of the other things that we need to make this whole. We've talked about plates that we need, we've talked about stanchions that we're going to order, we've ordered some sandwich boards and for signage to make sure that we're prepared for visitors, they know what the expectation is on the front end. I can tell you that at the building levels, they're preparing our staff and making sure that they're identifying the correct staff to meet our students at the door, greet our students, and have this take off successfully at the school level. Also, we've kind of pushed out some information at the school level to see what staff is available at everyone, to visit every one of our schools, and make sure that we get over this hump on the front end. Anybody that we've talked to that has employed this technology, there is a learning curve on the front end for our students, for our staff, for our families. We've really pushed out a decent amount of information, and we'll continue to push out more information in terms of what this is going to look like, the purpose of it, the why of it. I think we're really laying the foundational groundwork right now to be successful, but with all that, I know we'll still face some challenges. I know parents still have questions, I know students will still have some questions coming into the building, and I know the board is very interested in being part of it as, as much as they possibly can. So again, that's kind of an update. I know if you guys have any questions, we can answer those, and I know the board wanted to leave it here to see what type of, how they could work through being part of the process.
Any discussions or questions? I know, Ms. Hoover, I would like for you to tell what you, the hard work you put in to have both boards be a part of those first few days of school.
I was going to mention that during board comment, if that's okay?
Okay, yeah.
I do have a question, Dr. Boyd, and I'm sure it's been worked out, but what are we doing after hours for football games on Saturday mornings for, you know, I mean, do we have anything? Because if anybody wants to bring something in, they can do it at that time.
Do you want to speak to it, Travis? We've talked about it, and I'll certainly give Dr. Burns an opportunity to speak to it.
We're prepared to implement the metal weapons detection devices at all sporting events, regardless of the event. So we'll, we'll have our coming out party, of course, probably at the first football game, if not, probably the first field hockey game, whenever, whatever occurs first. We'll, we'll have them out and about, ready to go.
And you're going to have principals man those, or you're going to have dedicated staff?
We're going to have dedicated staff man those, because of course, principals, you want them to pretty much float, but you will have a principal who will be, or an assistant principal, who will be in charge of that front gate area, monitoring that process.
And, you know, one of the reasons I'm asking is some of those teams meet at six in the morning for practice, so...
So you're talking, you're, you're...
So I, so the dedicated personnel would take care of that, I would, I would...
So that's a slightly different question. So that's, that's the events. We've also talked about, you know, making sure that we're prepared between office hours from when we say, and it's different at every one of our schools, when, when the doors open, and when we're prepared for that, and then when the doors close, and when we're prepared for that, and then really how we're going to receive folks. It's going to be challenging on the high school level specifically because it's such a hub of activity. There's, there's always stuff going on. I can think, I can walk those hallways in my mind right now and think about theater and all kinds of things that go on at that building. So we've talked about that and how we're going to employ that. It's, it's really going to be a challenge a bit, but formally, the event is going to be covered with the weapon detection system. The office hours right now, we've had conversations about if you show up to school before it's open, and that happens right now with, specifically, we've talked about staff kids, staff that has kids. We're going to make sure that, you know, the staff kids know that when we're operational, your expectation is just like that of every other student. You've, you're going to make your way to a station and work your way through that station. So I'm sure we'll work through some other issues that are unique in nature, but, but our expectation right now, whether it's after-school events or within business hours of the school day, the, the unit's up, the staff is available to receive you, and we're ready to perform the operation.
Yes, and, you know, that's like a track meet that's, you know, they got to be there at 5:30 in the morning, and they don't get back until midnight.
Yeah.
You know, how is it covered doing that, period? That's things that we have to work out, I'm sure.
It is, yeah. And some, and some of what we talked about is, is the expectation of supervision. If, you know, if you're coming back at midnight, then obviously we don't have staff that's set up with a weapon detection system, but there is an increased expectation for supervision at that time from coaches or whatever it may be to, to hopefully fill that void if we can't necessarily set up the weapon detection system. Thank you, Dr. Burns.
Thank you. All right, anything, anyone else have anything to say?
Yeah, I, I guess at the board meeting after school starts, is that our next board meeting? It'd be after school starts, right?
Yes.
Is maybe just to hear how it went, maybe just a brief report, just kind of hearing, I mean, it sounds like a lot of us are going to be there. I apologize, I have a prior commitment to it, it was made a long time ago, but it'd be nice to hear how it went, just a very brief report, maybe from Dr. Burns or whatever.
Okay. Moving forward, we have the committee reports. Mr. Frank?
I don't have any.
Mrs. Cleveland?
I don't have anything to report.
Mr. Bush?
I really don't either, except that A T I, the lab school, they're continually trying to make sure we got enough employees to begin this new year. It will be, ninth grade was completed and it was very successful. I mentioned that at the last board meeting, and now we're going to be starting new eighth graders coming to ninth, of ninth graders going into tenth, and we're still hiring staff, and so, but it's looking very good.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover?
I don't have any committee reports.
And neither do I. Okay, annual policy manual notification.
So per our policy, it is, is the requirement of the superintendent annually at a school board meeting to make sure that our community via the school board meeting is aware that we have a King George County School Policy Manual available. It is linked in, in our board document tonight. It's also available online for anybody that desires to see it. It's available through Board Docs, and we often don't have any issue with anybody retrieving policies if they need to, but again, it's an annual requirement that I make that notification.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Then it says superintendent's report.
Yes, Madam Chair, so the buzz is palpable right now in the School Division. We are, we are very, it's, my wife is, you looked at me with a look that you didn't like the word buzz. So...
It's not a hot topic right now.
My wife's classroom is the buzzing bees, so it's, it's in reference to basically the activity that's going on right now. We're in high swing, things are rolling. We welcomed our new teachers back last week. Thursday, we were at the University of Mary, Mary Washington, Daugren. We had our new, new staff, all of our administrator staff in for professional development for instructional leadership. It was wonderful. I can't say enough about those that attended. Certainly appreciate all of our administrative staff being there, and the University of Mary Washington did a very good job, and our, our staff at the school board office did a very good job of pulling that all together. I think it set the groundwork for, for a good year in terms of instructional leadership. So was it that even, that we then turned around, or was it the next day they, we did popsicles at the playground and invited, we kind of dodged some, some thunder clouds and invited our community out. I made it to every single elementary school, and we all had a good turnout at all of our elementary schools and invited our community and our students in early. We've got a lot of folks, a lot of family that's excited, a lot of kids that are excited. They were playing on the playground and having popsicles, and they're ready to start school. As we move into this week, we have our official convocation. I'm officially inviting you all to, if you can make it to our convocation on Friday. It'll be a great event. This year is, our theme is hometown spirit, and we've got some, some, I don't want to let, well, I can't let the cat out of the bag because I sent it to staff today, but we've got Jermon Bushrod coming, former NFL player and, and local hometown hero who does a number of things for our community, and he's going to be our keynote speaker. So it should be a good evening, a good afternoon activity. It starts at 11:30 for lunch, so anybody that can make it, please come by. We're going to wear our shirts, and you'll see us kind of fit in with our other schools in terms of attire and everything. And it's a, it's really one of the great events of the year because it's one of the only times that all of our employees come together to the high school, share a meal together, and kick the school year off together. So we'll, we'll have our school board chair speak, our board of supervisors chair speak. We'll have delegate Kent Pugh speak. And so it's, it's all a good event, and if you can make it, it would be wonderful. And then, other than that, we did get notifications today that registration is open for the VSB A convention this year, which is in November, but we do have to start making those plans. So if you guys can let me know at your earliest convenience, what your plan is for, for the convention, that would be greatly appreciated. And that's, that's all I have this evening. Thank you, principals, this evening for, for a great presentation. I appreciate it.
Board comments. Mr. Bush?
I just also want to express my appreciation for the administrators that are here, and just, God bless you for all the work that you're doing. I know the beginning of the year is, is tough. The end of the year is also tough. But I, I thank you again, as I've said many times, I've been an administrator both elementary, middle school, and high school. And it, those are all different things of preparing for the new year. I think about the vast differences between when I was a high school principal and an elementary. They're a lot of work, but they're different. And so I just appreciate, appreciate you being here tonight because I know right now, school's about to start, and you're probably thinking, I got to do this, and this, and this, and this. So thank you for being here. Also, for the entire school board staff, I know there's a, thank you, Dr. Boyd, and the entire staff is, like you said, it's, it's exciting, but it's also, this is now gearing up for a lot of work. And I just want to express my appreciation. As a board member, thank you for everything you do. People like Amanda, I don't want to start naming people and end up forgetting everybody. But anyway, thank you for that. Thank you for my fellow board members. And thank you, Ms. Davis, for filling in tonight. You're, you're doing a great job, and I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes, thank you to the whole board for accommodating me and for the chair for taking over. Appreciate it. Dr. Boyd, Ms. Galv, Ms. Higgins, I know you had to jump through some hoops to make it happen last minute. I appreciate you all, and thank you for allowing me to attend virtually. I did enjoy the popsicles at two of the elementary schools. I'm glad that we did not have bad weather. It was, it did turn out to be a great event. I think it was a good idea. And I am, have been working with the board of supervisors and the school board to see that we can all be present and show our support on both transition day and the first day of school. Thank you to everyone who's going to take the time to be present and show, show the students and families how much we care about our community. We're working collaboratively, and I, I appreciate everybody for all their, their hard work and their time. It's a, I know it's hard to, to change schedules and have other jobs and children and everything, so thank you very much. And then, thank you for all the staff of all, all the county, whole, whole King George County because you have a dedication and commitment to our students and our families and all of King George community, and it's very obvious in everything you do. We have a great school system, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Mr. Frank?
As always, I'd like to thank the staff for all that you do, and tonight has been a breath of fresh air compared to last year. So I'm, I'm really excited and looking forward to the start of the school year. Also, I'd like to thank Aaron, you know, you sat down there and you do all the work, and we hardly ever recognize you, so I'd like to thank you for all that, all that you do also. Dr. Boyd, just have a, a couple of things that we talked about earlier and see if we, there was, from students before the end of school about the water fountains in the high school. Has that been corrected?
Yes, sir, I believe it has. I'll follow up on that. We've talked about it three or four times this summer with our maintenance staff, and at last check, I was told they were operational. We'll need to look at that again and see where we are with that. It's not something that was on your radar at all. This was pre-Dr. Burns, but we've, it's been on our radar. We've talked about it. I'm understanding that parts have been ordered and water fountains have been fixed, and I'll follow up.
You and I have talked several times about mentorship programs. Are we still tracking that?
Yeah, I appreciate you asking. I had a great meeting last week with the Big Brother, Big Sister organization. Actually, Bill Davis gave me the contact, finally worked out a meeting with them, and they are very interested in, in getting more involved in, in King George County. They had a number of good ideas, and when we sat down and talked about some of the resources that we can apply to that, they're thinking not only mentors and mentees in the sense of, you know, an adult to a student, but also something in the effect of, you know, our high school students mentoring our elementary school students and, and those type of opportunities. So I'm going to continue that dialogue. They're rolling this year with some things that they've got on their end, but I can tell you, they're laying the groundwork in terms of making sure that we're prepared with big brothers and big sisters here moving forward. In terms of teachers, I've also arranged a few relationships and set up a few opportunities from, for some of our newer teachers to, to get together with some of our experienced or retired teachers.
And bus cameras, where are we with, with bus cameras?
Not where I want to be right now. We're continuing to explore some other vendors to see. What we're talking about is the stop-arm cameras. Our, our buses are all outfitted with, I believe, four cameras internally. We don't currently have any external cameras, to my knowledge. We really, I personally really want to see if we can employ the bus stop-arm camera technology. There's a few vendors out there, but I have not seen anything yet, nor has Mr. Grigsby brought anything to me yet that makes a whole lot of sense. If you remember when we talked about it last night, the cost is exorbitant for a rural school division. You have some urban school divisions that have employed this technology, but not, not many rural school divisions. And you will see here, as we start school, that this becomes a topic of conversation pretty much annually with folks that need to be reminded that you cannot drive past a school bus when the stop-arm is extended.
Can we coordinate with Sheriff Giles and get some of, some of their help, some help from the sheriff's department?
Absolutely.
All right, and that's, that's all I have. I just want to thank everyone out here for, for coming tonight, those who spoke, thank them for, for speaking. I mean, Mr. Runji here, Sherman Pastor Davis, and the lady who spoke about the bus stops. Thank, thank everyone for coming out.
I also want to ditto, thank you for everyone that came out and presented tonight. Thank you for the administrators for, for joining us in these fun board meetings. We really appreciate you coming here and being with us. I also want to say thank you to our chair, Kathy Hoover, for all of the work that she's put in to ensure that our, our board, as well as the board of supervisors, is going to be available to support transition day and also the opening day of school. Myself, I'm going to be reaching out to Dr. Nice for the transition day. I'll be there helping you. And then, Ms. Eli will be at Sealeston Elementary School on your first day, and I'm looking forward to being tasked with some duties. So I'll be reaching out to you. I, I also appreciate the update on the weapons detection system, and I just want to, you know, make some comments for the community. This is going to be, this is not going to be like an easy walk for everyone involved with this. There is going to be some ups and downs, I'm sure, the first several weeks. And I just ask for grace with this. I think that this is such a good thing to have in our schools that will protect our students and our staff. I'm super excited about it, and I know it is going to be a transition, and I just want to thank everybody for that grace while we work through it. That's all.
So when I look out here, I feel like a kid in a candy shop because I'm so excited about this year. And I, I love positivity, and I can tell every one of you principals that I have heard great things about you guys, every one of you that's here. And so it's super exciting. I feel like we're just a huge team, all on the same page, and I love, I love that. Okay, so anyway, so I'm really, really excited this year. And in fact, I don't want my bubble to burst, so if you have any bad news, don't come anytime soon. It's just, but anyway, so I want to, and thank you for coming today and for all the presentations that you, that you brought for us, the updates and things like that. I could feel the excitement from these two when Dr. Burns, when you brought up the, I mean, just the, what, what did we read, Ed, about the, the consequences you were, what it, how, how was it worded? Do you remember?
No.
No, but anyways, like, I could feel the excitement coming from, especially Ed over there when you were speaking. And then, I went to Potomac Elementary School for Popsicle Day, and I have to brag on our principals and assistant principals. We had a new assistant principal there too. Forgive me, but remind me of her name, Jennifer Walker, Mrs. Walker. But I felt like family, like I just, I was nervous. Let's all get out. I, when I didn't see anybody at first, because I got there a little early, I'm like, oh, they're not doing it. And I was like, no, I need to break the ice and get this over with. And not because of you, just me, I was a little shy. And I get out, and, and what I appreciated about it was, we weren't just standing there going, hi, you want a popsicle? First day of school? It was, there was so much engagement there. Hey, I remember you. Hey, are you ready for school? Where did you come from? And there's a lot of conversations happening with the family, and that was awesome to see. So I really am excited, and I'm very, very thankful for you all. And thank you, Dr. Nice, you always hold the fort down. You do a great job. And that's it. Oh, okay, can I, can I get a motion for us to move into closed session?
Go ahead.
That Pursuit to State Code section 2.2-3712A of the Code of Virginia, that the board convene in closed meeting to review hires and resignations, and specifically for discussion, the superintendent's evaluation as permitted under 2.2-3711A, number one of the Code of Virginia.
I second.
Properly second. Any discussion? No. Motion made. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion made. Sorry.
Don't forget...
Don't forget.
No, I'm just all the time moving for you.
We ready? Remember all this stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna come back in open session and then we're gonna...
Computer died. That's okay.
Then we're gonna do all this stuff. I make a... You want me to do it? Yeah, I don't care. Go ahead. You want me to go? I make a motion that we return to open session. I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to state code section 2.2-3712D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public businesses matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, and considered in the meeting by the public body.
We are now in open session.
No, no, I need a second.
Oh.
Second.
Properly, second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Certified.
Certified.
Aye, certified, certified. We're now in open session.
Right.
Okay.
Now we need a motion to approve.
Yep.
I make a motion that we approve.
I make a motion that we approve the hires and...
And resignation.
Resignations that were presented in closed session.
Second. All those in favor?
Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Sorry, it's late.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Do you have to say the next date?
No, they don't, boy suit, right?
You can.
Thanks for helping me so much.